And I got a lot of.
You're sure.
Yeah.
I was gonna have to run quick.
I was gonna panic, I was thinking we got the wrong truck. We're doing hand truck.
I'm gonna have a lot of panic things.
Yeah, that's something I haven't figured out about here. I put both batteries at the same time. I'm always good.
Do you turn your valves when you take them out?
No, I just.
Okay.
Oh, thank battery.
Word like that.
Yeah.
They were last time we could figure out that.
She wasn't there.
Make a ring.
I'm a little behind on a few days. I did get your message, so I'm not one. Thanks for helping me get that.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
You did a perfect job.
Good. Can I help you guys with the drive up?
Okay.
So it's better.
Have one here. I need just some touch please. I do want you to.
United States of America is truly valid for which stands one nation, and we're not individual.
Thank you everybody for joining us, but I'd like to introduce everyone to the list. We have Molly Norberg here as our new administrative executive assistant. She's going to run the show from here on out. First up on the agenda, we have Park County engineer Brad Edwards to award bids for the dump truck and tractor trailer.
Summary of these, you know, this morning. We'll start with tractors. Recall, we filed last week, we see three bids for. Tractor that we use to pull belly dogs and other things, tow trailers. We received a bid from Floyd's Truck Center for Western Star, a bid for the 47X. For Tri-State for a Volvo in Peterbilt, Wyoming, the Peterbilt, the 567. Of the prices, the best trade offer on the tractor was from Floyd's Truck for the. Western Star for like around 25,000, 24,496. We really think in all cases that we could do better to try to sell these on the market instead of trying to go with the trade in. Just looking at some comparable prices because it's a 2004 with about 500,000 miles. Just looking at others, there's a high demand for trucks right now. We really think we could do better. So if we focus on the end of the new tractor. Which includes the extended warranty. The low bid was the Western Star, 133,171. Volvo was next at 140,454. And the Peterbilt was next at 153,268. One thing to keep in mind, like we discussed, the staff needed their some advantages. Making sure you get a quality truck for as long as we're gonna hold on to them. You know, the way we use them, just wear and care over the long term trading value at the end. So we kind of tossed around, we talked to our mechanic called the Peterbilt versus possibly the Western Star. One of the drawbacks, chip you by one way in here, but the engine that that Peterbilt has, it's the, I'll say the trouble, the A-C-A-R. As opposed to, you know, the Cummins or Detroit. It's not quite as, I guess, preferred, at least from what our mechanics say, better efficiency, it's hard to get parts for sometimes because it's really that it's only a. Peterbilt freight liners. So that's a drawback to that. You know, it is 20,000 more. I think what we'd like to do, just do it the way it is.
Well, I was just going by the opinion of our mechanic. He's a real good truck guy, he's really knowledgeable. And he likes the Detroit over the backcar, so I'm kind of leaning towards the Western Star because of that.
But it is the cheapest.
Well, and we discussed earlier, I mean, you gotta balance out. How much it's gonna be, how much you're gonna be spending on service on this, what your trade in value at the end is gonna be. And we've had good luck with Western Stars.
It's been good, the service has been good, we've really gained play. I think there are some events to be, if only we would think it's a really big truck, it's one of the echelon of trucks that's up there pretty high. But like I said, I think that engine, our mechanic says, he would rather that Western Star, the Detroit.
Discussion Lloyd.
No, I just, you wanna be separately, I'm assuming?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna work separately.
So I'm, I'd like to accept the bid of Floyd's Truck for the Western Star relapse, the trade in.
No, we're not gonna do, we're not gonna do the trade in. So you're gonna, you're one to your, your motion though.
Motion is to accept the bid from Floyd's. Floyd's Truck Center on the Western Star 47X without trade.
So one for the 133, 171, I'll second that. Okay, moving second, is there further discussion? Oath in favor?
Aye.
Vote for the carry.
Moving to the dump truck, we received five bids for dump trucks, standard five. So with the up bid and everything, so we have a Peterbilt. Again, if we take the trades out of it, the Volvo, the Tri-State gave us, I think, a pretty decent trade for the whole 2008. Volvo that we traded back in at 45,000. I still think we could probably do a little better than that. The others of the trade is pretty low and I think we could do a lot better. So if we kind of take that out of it, for such the price for the Peterbilt. 367, that's 274,072. Price for the Tri-State Volvo, which. This is the three up bid, so this is the, they're out of the. 268,944, that's the Volvo. Other bid for Tri-State with the Volvo, but it's the Koi up there, which is basically a different. Plow, well, I'll say plow, different sander. But anyway, that one is 273,490. Floyd's Truck gave a bid of 260,94, that's for the Western Star 47X. That is for the Ameritech up there. The Haiti Plow Monroe Sander Williams Goodwood Box. And then they also gave a bid on the, I said they had 260,94. Floyd also gave a bid for Western Star 47X, the Koi Brother dump bit, which is the Haiti Plow Swenson Sander, dirt glass box. 261,836. So the low bid was Floyd Truck Center, Western Star 47X. I will say it's a new model, we watched the. I don't know what color that production on it from the, from the manufacturer. It's kind of a new body styles, some new electronic things on it, so.
More stuff to go wrong.
More stuff to go wrong, but all, all things is, sounds pretty good. But anyway, again, we were just discussions on the Peterbilt, same issues that we've talked about before, the type of thing. The other thing that's problematic on the plow truck. The Peterbilt, in one of their exceptions, they can't set up the front axle for plow quite like. Can you explain the chip?
Step forward versus.
Is it step forward versus step back?
To create issue.
It's a weight issue and it doesn't perform as well. It's problematic for, so maybe that was a conversation with mechanics, so. And they put that as an exception, so they can't, can't set up the truck like we need it set up. So that's problematic and we had the same issue with the engine, the Western Star of the.
So Marco, you were talking up there earlier about the, your concern about the boxes, is the, is that Williamson, Goodwin Box, Goodwin Box the one you prefer?
We.
Was that the one you thought you might have problems with?
No, I looked into that and the, the strength of the steel on both of them are the same.
Okay.
So.
All right.
We're good there. Tailgates are double wall reinforced, the boxes are double wall reinforced, so I just wanted to check it out.
We're good there. So.
So I guess our recommendation, if this be a truck that be used in the power curve, after talking to the mechanic, I think we're united that the Western Stars. Industrial government actually would recommend.
Oh, with the Ameritech.
Ameritech.
With the Ameritech up there.
Without trade.
Commissioner.
Without trade, yeah.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I have a question that we accept the from Floyd's Truck Center for the Western Star with the Ameritech uplift without trade in. 260,94. Session.
Moving second, is there further discussion? Oath in favor?
Aye.
Vote for the carry. Okay, Brian. Next up, you're going to. Test the advertisement for. Landfill supervisor position. I just emailed everyone. The ad CJ was able to dig up for us. Positioning for two, two of them, Molly, who were having a hard time finding stuff, they found it for us, and so. We looked at that ad and. Decided we want to move forward with that. I'll have everybody one. The only, the only thing we really need to change on that ad would be because of the raises. And were you able to, does anyone come up with a?
I've got that.
Or you got it?
Okay.
Okay, Ryan, I'll let you take it.
Okay, so. Again, we're, we're losing our landfill solid waste managers, so for the publics, I'll let you know that. And so we're looking to replace that position. The job description, we reworked that a little bit last time. What Timon L. left is, was great cover board, we reworked that up, he held that to you, so I looked that over. That's a grade 24 with the current, with all the raises that went through last time, that's 2711 to start. 38 Elmhaya, so 2711 to 38, is that rate? Our current manager's position is, I think it is, he's just, just shy of 30,000 now, is where he's at. But yeah, I think, I think we've got a pretty good structure that's working well, we've made some changes out of the landfill. With both equipment and personnel. Our position of what we do, which is the, the way this structure's kind of set up, with engineering division, road bridge division. Fleet management and landfill division. Really, the, the engineering kind of serves as an administrative for the whole public works. So kind of with that said, it's really important to have that, that spot in there that, that is. The day to day, I think we're running pretty good, the out here, the landfill is getting better, we've got people in places for it. But have, having some help apply it, like I did for the road bridge foreman, the transfer of the, administrator side, really. Will be, need somebody solid to help connect the dots between all the landfills, help with the permitting side of things. You know, special waste disposal requests, public issues, you know, problems that come up. So yeah, we're looking to replace, make the short story long.
Right. So if we, if we put this out right away, what timeline would you like as far as the application date?
Yes, so Greg's with us till first part of December, so it's already. I think we'd probably realistically shoot for, try to cast a big bet. Maybe try to bid right before Christmas, bid, bid December.
As far as building the position?
Well, no, 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 in terms of applications due, application deadline. I mean, what do you guys think, realistically, to try to get it in before Christmas, you think? December.
I think if you have the applications due by the end of December.
That's kind of what I would think.
December 31st?
Yeah.
And you've got the, you've got the JavaScript ready to be dropped on the website?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I'm just looking at the, the advertisement that we issued there with the correction of 2711 to 38. As a compensation and an application.
Yeah, and just been unhappy to, how long are we gonna, are we gonna advertise? Advertise, hello?
Oh, I got what you're saying.
Now, I. When are we gonna start advertising and how long do you want to advertise?
I would like to start advertising a week. Probably be as soon as, like, give it baby, I think, a week. But as soon as possible. And then run it for a couple of weeks in terms of the papers. I might also advertise Duce Water, which is the Nashville Solid Waste Association. We've got a local Wyoming state chapter, so we'll try to get that out right away. Very many people follow that. And. Advertise, I'll go in favor for two weeks if that's. Yes.
Move to. Advertise for the position of the solid waste manager. With, based on our previous advertisement with the correction to the compensation, 2711 rate to $38 per hour. What's benefits and application dates due by December 31st or 23rd? Or as soon as possible.
Okay, I'll second. Moving second, is there further discussion on that? Favor?
Aye.
I'm curious.
I'll just give you if I could, if you got, if I overscheduled.
We got a little.
We got a little.
Okay.
So with this chart that I set out, this is just to kind of plant the idea, as you know, with our engineering side of things, we did not replace our. Operations coordinator, so we're one person now where we were, which I think is going okay, except when people are out, but we're busy. We hope that our operator, what's with her style of operation, whether she is, she's coordinating, she does everything. But anyway, the hope was that she would, would be able to float between us and our engineering and landfill. It just really hasn't happened, not a lot of time, and but maybe it's just because of people being out, sick or hunting season or whatever. So I think long term, we really gotta get some thought in, I think, once we get that landfill manager position in. We chat about it some more, maybe come in, when Sandy goes down as far as life she's out. As far as our assistant landfill manager, she's the only one that maybe have a book keeping, accounting, bills getting paid, money coming in, she deal with a lot of money. You've really gotta get somebody in to kind of help.
What I propose, Brian, is, you know, kind of formalize what you're after.
Yep.
Looking at it on the agenda for a full blown discussion on this.
And I'd like to wait till we get that landfill.
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot, we could see what, see, they have a different.
Yeah.
He, she, they have a different person, the idea. So just.
The only thing I'd say is looking at your chart where you locked in the vacant administrative assistant position.
Yeah, yeah.
As I would take another line over there to your engineering department, because they may be able to blow this way out.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what we did to, I think. All righty, okay, we'll get that going over. Get type of one, close little discussion, real quick.
What's that?
There's a second discussion?
Um, maybe.
Not, not on these days, but just see what you guys think, so we're doing a lot with the landfill equipment wise, and I wanted to ask whether it would be to cut back in all this, but. So we, as you recall, we have about one and a half billion worth of equipment that we budgeted looking after the landfill. Now that we've got some skilled guys in there talking through the operations of what would be, we think we could actually enough. Do you see that? But it's gonna take shaky. Instead of, one of the things we were gonna buy was a toaster, we're thinking that they got a little grater blade. And it's falling apart, but they're using it like crazy. We've got some skilled guys that are able to use it, they, they would rather us get that. Get a motor blade, have a blade and they use it every day. And, and so I guess bottom line is, we had planned on articulate dump, attract hole, call back to. Those, we got the call back. I guess what we'd like to do is, we've already got four motor grater Ford that just did us, we'd like to make, add one. Give it to them, put it on a buyback, just like we're doing with the road bridge, and give it to the landfill, we don't buy the toaster. Sell the, we got an old, old, old cat road bridge plate, sell it. Anyway, I guess I'm asking, is this a discussion for something else or?
And we'd be.
We can play within our budget.
What, what's, what is the time sensitivity?
No, 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 it's not.
Bring it to us next week.
Yeah.
Just give us the, give us one of your great big machines. Large font, please, trap, large font.
Finally, that's what we're all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And large font, so we got figures. Yeah, that's all right.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. So next on the agenda, we did have approved ad for director of public security and further investigation. That's taken over to the sheriff last time, so he is gonna be. His department's gonna be in the advertising for that, that position. Next up, we have discussion on travel manage, what do you guys score of the purpose travel management plan?
I don't know, if I close my mouth, I may not show up.
That's all right, I'm gonna kick it over to Commissioner Tilden, we do have Bert Miller with the Snowmobiles, Snowmobile Association here to be part of the discussion.
Okay, Molly, you need to take really good notes, you're the one that's gonna have to write the letter.
We can give you a framework.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, give a brief history on this thing. And it all started travel management after the land use plan of the Forest Service. Came out with their final rule. So it started in 2015, they went through the scoping process, had the public meetings, all of that, they had a lot of interest. The meetings were well attended, I attended all of them. There was anywhere from 150 to 200 people per meeting. And then the guy that was doing the travel management for the Shoney National Forest, he retired. So basically, it stalled out for three years, nothing was done. And then last year in 2020, right in the middle of COVID, they kicked this process off again, so they got some money and they hired a guy here, a little waiter, and a travel manager. So they had a Zoom meeting, virtual meeting last year, which I attended, and with a fiasco. I mean, you couldn't understand them, they didn't have the maps. And so our comments at that point in time was to basically stop the process until they could have in-person meetings. And they did. They extended the comment to, it's predictable, 30 days, they have 60 days to comment. And now they've come back with an effort to try and get this thing done. And I attended the Zoom meeting last week, I know Bert was on there, there were 38 people on the meeting. And I think there was four of them with the Forest Service, so that meant there was 34 people outside the Forest Service that attended that meeting. It was better than the meeting I had in 2020. But they still did have some problems, so it's people that were muted, you couldn't understand, they couldn't talk. One of the Forest Service people was talking about one thing, and the slide they had up on the split screen was something totally different, so it, it was still confusing. And the one thing that really upset me is the fact that alternative four, which is now their preferred alternative. And they basically created alternative four after the comments that they received in 2020. The comments that they got from a Zoom meeting. And my fear is the majority of the comments that caused them to recreate alternative four. The comments are primarily from special interest groups, like conservationists and environmentalists and this types of things. So anyway, that's where we are today on alternative four. And, you know. When we make our comments, it could be short and sweet, or we could go into in-depth, however you want, want to go. My personal opinion is that on the Shoney National Forest right now, there are only 36 miles. Of motorized trails that are open for public use. And I think we all know that. Motorized dudes, and especially snow machine use, winter use, I mean, they're our big sport in Park County, and a lot of people don't it, and more and more people don't it all the time. So my fear is that if we say, okay, we'll go with alternative four, and alternative four, they want to decommission 11 mile road. They say the majority of that road is administrative, but they didn't actually give you mileage on administrative roads. They said about five mile administrative road. And then they also want to, let's see. Well, there was an additional five mile of the existing road out of the 36 miles, that they want to convert from open to administrative use. So all for all intents and purposes, that's another five miles that they want to take out of, out of the process. And my fear is going forward that they take, we have an additional desire for use on the national forest. And you need to understand that the Shoney National Forest is a backcountry forest. Only 17% of it is open for motorized use, only 17%, however many. Two and a half, three million acre for the land, only 17% that all these people are buying for the use. And so what's gonna happen in the future? If they become more restrictive and they get more people in a smaller area. Then the next time they go through travel management or Forest Service land use planning, it'll become even more restrictive and they'll use the. Basically, it was an excuse to become more restrictive, and say, well, we have more people, and so we have more resource now, so we have to close more land off. And so I guess my recommendation at this point in time, I don't think it matter hill to hill being, they're gonna do what they want. But my recommendation to just go with alternative one, which is what we have today on the ground. I don't want to see any more loss of activities on the national forest. And so with that being said, and I know the snow machine's a little bit different deal, if they weren't hit wire as hard as the, as the OHB users were, so I'll let it turn it over to Bert. And we gotta, I think we all got a coffee first of the snow machine association comment.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Tilden covered the history pretty good. One of the, I'm just gonna go into, one of the reasons why the Snowmobile Club up in this area is very interested in alternative four. Is because in alternative four, we basically are not losing really any, any grounds, we're actually picking up ground. If you read the travel plan management, there's roughly about 10.45 across the whole Shoney Forest that we'll pick up. 5.4 miles of that will be the Ghost Brick Trail, which is from Painter Store up to the gravel bed, which would be a nice addition that we've been working on to relieve some traffic and help the community and the stores and stuff. One of the things that we do have in there, we do have the dates, which would be November 1st to June 15th. Now, the folks that are not motorized, they want to pull that all the way back to April. Well, if you study the snow tell data science, which the Shoney Forest has, and we'll have to give them some credit, they have really studied it. Actually pulled it even a little tighter, it shows that we have plenty of snow. But when that, June 15th hits, it's done, we're over, and we've got to realize that. But that is a better mechanism to do those dates and in the travel plan, adequate snow. That does give the ability for the Shoney Forest to be watching the snow, we need to close off an area, we need to close off an area, things like that. We, of course, would like alternative one, but alternative one, if we go back to the original 2015 travel plan. It was set, we have to have mechanisms that, that are gonna help us guide this plan. One of them is adequate snow, and that verb is just still in there, adequate snow. And the dates will suit everybody more than saying we have to have 12 inches, 18 inches. If you've ever been around snow and you groom it, you might have two foot by the time you get done and you groomed it, that you're gonna go down to three to four inches, okay, now we're gonna stop, now we gotta wait for more snow. That makes it more difficult for the, the Forest Service. I also included last night, as they were getting the Dewboys Club, that range over there. It was important for us to know how they feel, as we've attended the meetings. And they, there's 1,350 acres over there, that is basically, oh, they, they really call it the falls deception and pinnacles. And that's before the lodge, as you're going up, it's off to the left. And that's open, that's all the way over the cross-country scheme. Now, if you look at the maps, they've got some nice trails in there and things of that nature. Okay, that's been a, basically a gentleman's agreement for almost seven years now. That's still building, will not happen in that area, and right above Brooks, Brooks Lake Lodge, so those. They're ready to say, okay, we'll allow that to go into the travel plan, that it's, snowmobiles cannot be in that area. The Shoney Forest then will be able to enforce that. With ticketing and whatever they feel that they need to do. So you have the Snowmobile community over there, ready to say, we understand, we'll put that in, that'll be, if this passes, it'll go in stone for 10 years until we start. That'll be, if this passes, it'll go in stone for ten years until we start the process over again. So what we're looking at is we're trying to make alternative four work. And just like Commissioner Tilden said, two thousand and fifteen has been a long ride. And we need to get something accomplished. So as you can see from the Dewey side, the DuBois side, and also the letter of the Wyoming State Snowmobile Association, you know, as we're coming across, uh, that alternate four is finally came up with a plan that we feel that we all can get around and make work. It gives the Forest Service, uh, all the latitude that they need, uh, to operate it. We gotta, we're working on a ten-year plan. And we're really happy that the Shoney Forest is now looking at the roads and is working on calling them trails. And those will be sixty-four inch wide trails in the water there. That means a vehicle can still go up and down. But that also made the Shoney Forest cannot apply for grants, we stay trails and, uh, you know, fuel tax money, things like that, because we put money to trails. Except for state trails, we can't do, we get no growth. So that's why we really feel alternative four is coming a long ways. And we feel that the Shoney Forest has done a lot of work on trying to make alternative four work for everybody. I will agree with Commissioner Tilden, um, it's very tough on these Zoom meetings, I mean, you guys are doing it all the time. You know, sometimes our suggestion is that you represent a group in this particular area, let your representative instead of four or five, get on the phone or get on the Zoom meeting, overload the bandwidth and add in what, all the DuBois. But I assure you, we've been on the phone, we've been doing more phone and emailing and back and forth to make sure that.
Well, you know, with the Zoom meetings, the one thing to do, that's concerning me, is when they first started the process of scoping, and they had, so there's great participation from the general public when they were in person. And this last Zoom meeting, as I said, there was only thirty-four people from the general public, and I presume that the majority of them were special interest groups.
Yes, you were on the same meeting. Commissioner, and yeah, it, it does overload things. I mean, there's nothing we can do about it. We, we would really rather have the in-face meetings, where we can put the maps up as big as your screen right here, and we can all look, but they felt that, uh, that their meetings couldn't be more than fifty people, and then that would include the four that were helping conduct it and would shrink, shrink it. And they too had worries that, that the special interest groups would load the meetings, so I think we have to focus on what they have produced for us and, and look at the, the pros and cons. We all know that we can't live with it with the date of April thirtieth. This is gonna come as you guys are near. We can't live with that, that's ridiculous. Let's come out of the scope. We're all, we're gonna hold tight, uh, to June fifteenth, that's where we're gonna be at, that's where we're gonna set our feet and stone, and that's where we're gonna fight for our bear tooth boundary. Majority of you, I think, have been up there, you've been up there through the winter, when we had the WPLI meetings, that was some, some of the best outings that we had to be able to go through that whole area on snowmobile. It was probably about twenty-one, twenty-two of us showing the whole area. You know, you're up there and there's ten foot of snow. This is the best area we have, and Commissioner Tilden also told you that snowmobile, snowmobiling, the sport brings in a lot of revenue. We're gonna have a report hopefully out the next, I'm hoping, I'll find out when I get to the state trails, uh, the, next week. And I'm, I'm estimating that we're gonna have revenue coming into this state of over two hundred million dollars. And over sixty percent of that is gonna be tourism. I mean, it's really changed dramatically. And yes, we are up to about thirty-nine thousand registrations. But that's in-state, out-of-state, but that is nothing compared to back in, say, uh, twenty-eight, twenty-five. You know, there was a lot, it was almost twice that amount. But snowmobiling has gotten a lot more responsible, machines are cleaner, uh, we can go places, yes, that we couldn't, but we don't share resources, the machines are light, they float. I would just ask you to look at alternative four, and as you go along, look at what the Tony Coggin said, said, I said, you, look at the DuBois, so we don't. But we think that's a pretty good offset, and thirteen hundred and fifty acres will be set.
I got, I got a quick question. I'll just second John. Lloyd, Lloyd, Lloyd.
Okay, uh, I'm not as big snowmobileer, I glanced off for before winter use, so I don't really have any serious hardware with it. Except your recommendation that you should be studying it most. My question is, and I, I asked it once before, and there I don't believe I ever gonna, I couldn't have answered it for me. Is the possibility of alternative four winter use filter for the one summary use? Is that a possibility?
Well, there, there's a possibility. One of the things that's always been confusing is why is it put out there for alternative?
Because I definitely have hardware with off for the four on the summary use trail.
Well, you, you have to go back and look at the, the trail system across the Shoney, Shoney Forest, it's almost zip. There is no trails, there's roads. And that's what we're trying to turn a lot of that across force. But, uh, I'm trying to figure out how to actually answer your question, so I'll give you that again.
Can we, can we have, and would they, and it's not here to say it's for, did you, do you have, do you believe that the Forest Service can accept alternative four for winter use, but not for summary use? Basically go with a different alternative for the summary use, or listed separate?
They are listed separate, so you probably could do that, that'd be the, uh, the case in question to answer that. But you can also look at alternative four and, and give the things that you like, the things that you would rather see in alternative. You can pull some of that down. Last year, we were between one and two, basically two of the caveat one. And also remember that, that when we started travel plan management in two thousand and fifteen, there had to be mechanisms in there for us to measure the sports and things. And the only thing that's in there is adequate snow. Based on the snow side, we need a little bit more, so we've got adequate snow, and then we've got the dates. So there's two mechanisms the Forest Service can use. We do not love snowmobiles, that's just ridiculous running around with a blower. So my suggestion is look at, look at some of your alternatives. And if you, if you like a lot of this, an alternative four, uh, then make recommendations, pull that, pulling it out of.
What, what, the, the things I don't like out of alternative four, you end up basically falling for it. I don't have to look at those. And that would be my, that's where I'm real pissed. If you remove all the bad stuff in alternative four, you end up with alternative one.
Well, um, then we go back and we don't have any, any, uh, the criticism that we're looking for. Uh, that's what I said, that's what I remember looking for, to regulate in all, alternative one. And we also don't have the Ghost Creek Trail, things of that nature. I don't believe that alternative one is, as much as you might put it out there, will, will fly in the meetings that I've been in. And I've been all the way to Washington DC, uh, throughout several years, through different administrations, um, visiting and, and saying you need to come up with an alternative that will work, that the Forest Service can work with.
Yeah, I got a, I got a quick question before you, uh, during the discussion of the winter use, they talked about winter closure on Ikester Lake. And I'm not familiar with that.
I'm not, I didn't pull that one up either.
Yeah, and it, it, it was on one of the, one of the slides that they had.
Is that out of Lander?
It was Ikesters, I think. There's an Ikester Lake up on Park, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, that's what they had me talking about.
Oh, that's, that's what I didn't understand, I thought it was some other lake that I didn't know about.
Ikester.
Yeah, Ikester Lake.
I didn't know. So anyway, if, if, if you guys aren't worried about it, I won't be worried about it.
It wasn't something that came up on our radar. Uh, we also work with our, a pub liaison for the state that helps us decipher seven hundred and some pages, and get right down to the meat of it. And we've had our club meetings and with our IT specialists, and in that agree, it's still this hard. Uh, when we're going through a slideshow, we condense it, and we're going back and forth through those maps. And it also is hard because sometimes the maps, amazingly, on the computer screen have clear coloration, where you can tell different areas. And then we project it, the reds become eaks and so on and so forth. We also have to remember, as we have to travel plan management, the snowmobile community is taking a beating, uh, as far as like the, the winter game, so on, I mean, push, 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 push it. What we have now is where we're at. That's where we are. And that's why we fight for as much as we do, uh, between us and Cook City, because that's where it's at. That's all we've got left.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I could just have more quick comments. The other thing, one of the things disturbing with seasonal closure, our, our first uh, comment to the Forest Service in twenty twenty, we talked about seasonal closure. And, you know, rather than put a blanket closure on an area, they had Forest Service has the ability to do it on a case-by-case basis. So I think that should be included in our comments all the way. We got a hundred and six miles of seasonal closures in the Clark Forest district. You know, that's, that's a lot of miles. And just blanket closure, whether they got snow, whether there's an elk in there, or here, or whatever, it's closed on such and such a day. So I think that should be on a case-by-case basis. And I guess, going back to Bert's comment, uh, you know, Bert, in your organization, you're being realist, I totally understand that. And the Forest Service is gonna come up with one or four alternatives. Their preferred alternative is number four. And so you're saying, well, that's, that's what we can do, so that's what we've got a little bit. We is committed to that. Say, okay, this is the best we can do. Personally, I'd rather just to go with alternative one, because they're not gonna listen to us anyway. I'm convinced of that. And another thing I'll bring up, and I wish she was here, that I'd ask her a question, is reading through the environmental assessment, the Forest Service, we're thanking all of their partners that helped us to get to this point. And they wanted specific thanks to the Greater Yellowstone Coalition for help to identify decommissioning of roads. And I'm going, now where is that coming from? That, that really bothered me. I wish Janice was here, because I'm sure. And, you know, when this process first started, there was a lot of public interest, there was a lot of public attendance at the meetings. And now it's down to one word, you know, when people are at risk anymore, it's like Black Chris. And Bert, let me ask you this question from the Zoom meeting the other day, did you get the impression that they possibly be willing to postpone the final record of decision until they could have in-person meetings? I did not.
Uh, you need to extend the comment period?
Yeah, well, not, not the comment period. Because, because what Lisa said was that she is restricted by some federal rule and regulations, that she cannot extend the comment period anymore.
Right.
But they could postpone the record of decision.
I didn't get that. Um, you know, maybe I missed to try to make notes and stuff, uh, I was very focused on the, that the comment period is gonna be where it's at. And the one thirty days that's been extended, but I did not, I did not get the extension of the national, the national register.
Okay.
I, I think, you know, once this goes into an alternative, then it's gonna have, it will come back out in Shoney role, this is our record, this is our, our preferred alternative, this is what we're moving forward with. Then we have another round of comments yet, and then we'll, we'll say.
Yeah, so, I mean, in our comments, if we wanted to recommend, we didn't offer record of the decision-making process until they could have in-person meetings, I don't think it's gonna fly. And an extended comment period, I don't think is gonna fly. And it's just really disturbing to me that the Forest Service is not seeking additional input. This thing went for three years and nobody even thought about it, and all of a sudden, boom, here it is, negative relief. It really did bother me.
Mr. Tilden, I, I think the reason that they were looking that way is because they've done so much studying on alternative four. It was trying to find the give and take, all the data that they've got, and all the give and take. And here it is, this is our preferred, which I'm actually glad that they, they came out with a preferred. Instead of here's one, two, and three, like, you guys pick back and forth, let's argue, let's go to all the meetings. Where they come out with an alternative that they are recommending to the public, so that we can look at it and, and study it, you know. Um, I, I actually like it better because we can study to see if it's what we want. And it shows me that they're trying to say, okay, here it is, we've studied, what do you think? Now, not all of our, our members, they might say, well, I agree with alternative four, except for this, this, this. You know, that's what those alternatives are for. I can guarantee you, alternative three is a total disaster. You know, they call it the big land grab. So, you know, I, I think our, our decisions will choose alternative four, and that's what's in the caveats if they, if they would like to run over and some of the things that they don't.
Mr. Chairman, this thing, Molly, here, Molly and I are gonna need to get. Well, I kind of like where, and I don't know how, how you guys flesh it out, but I kind of like where Lloyd's going is, is alternative four worked well for the, for the winter use. But can we, can we recommend alternative one for the summer use, or go into alternative four and tweak what they're recommending for summer use?
Well, in, in our original comments, and that was September fifteenth, twenty twenty. And that's pretty much what we did then. We said we prefer alternative one, but in the event winter use, they wanted to go with one of the alternatives we supported, which was forty-five, I don't feel so good. I would go to something similar, and I would suggest the same thing. I agree with her, but, all right.
And if you wanna, you wanna.
So we, we did change the date on this.
Yeah, there you go.
Given sure he is whatever you.
Kick it out to us, and then we'll, then we'll make a final decision on it next week.
Mr. Chairman, the Forest Service, uh, for us, has been very willing to come meet, yeah, to meet.
They, oh yeah, Casey, Casey has said that to me, is that he is, if, you know, he understands the Zoom meeting stuff, and he's somebody saying, if folks wanna come sit down with him, he's, or he'll come visit with him, with them, he's more than open to do that.
And he did so for our, for our club, and it was very helpful, because there were some pretty hard fired shots that didn't have to do with snowmobile, they had to do with hunting and, and things like that, so it was very, very, it was very good.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, one other thing, with your comments that you made to the Forest Service on alternative four, and also at the Zoom meeting, you talked about the restriction for the size of the vehicle, because we're getting more and more technology.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner. Uh, one of the things that we are very against is full-size vehicles being on the trail. Um, if you have a side-by-side or something like that, um, we're, we're not getting that picky. But when you take a full-size suburban, you put tracks on it, and you wanna run up and down, it really runs the trail. Uh, you know, you can have this wide, Yellowstone Park has had to, for many years, we don't blue tires versus tracks, and snowmobile get into those, and it's hard to get them out, or you, you can really have some problems. And off the trail, there's no reason in the world, any full-size vehicle should be off the trail. All that we're asking for is trouble, because even with our grooming, when we groom, we send that out even around on our safety shelter, there is a, there's a path that groomers takes to. And we've had accidents where we've gotten off, that groomer's been hung up. And here's a groomer that doesn't go out and get it, so. That's, that's what we're totally against. Not side-by-size, not an ATB tracks. We want the, the folks that are hunting and fishing or going up to bear tooth, like, if they got an ATBA, they're not gonna go up there. That's not what we're against, full-size vehicles, and we will let the Forest Service play that out with the federal regulations that have to do with full-size vehicles.
Okay, well, you've got direction.
All right, thank you. All the way. Molly, Molly has correction.
Bert, thank, thank you for coming to visit with us.
You betcha, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bert, appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, everything you guys do, some things are tough, some things are easy.
Hey, you know, there's an election coming up this year, might have to look for a new commissioner if you're.
You know, maybe, maybe when I retire, I'm thirty-five, sixty, so look out. Thank you, please, and you can help to you with our trails and the liaison, and we, that'd be too, so.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to motion that we adjourn.
Seconded. Boom, seconded, further discussion, owes us a favor.
I.
Ours was carried. Great.
If you can prepare, if we go around, this is the, this is the comment that we had left in September. And it'd be.
We have anything, we didn't, we didn't actually think that you signed.
Our consent, thank you.
Yeah, you, you won't be on the job Thursday, right? Yeah, okay, and I may be out Friday, so we got tomorrow.
Okay, then you can just kick it. Veterans Day.
Take a good look at the library board.
Oh, thank you.
Good luck in February. Hey, um, I think that's it. I think that's it, yeah, we just, Molly gets that, dial in, we can take a look at it, we'll decide on it.
Uh, do I have?
All right, good.
Thank you.
Who, quite Bert's, if there's, if it's, if it's a case, well, on the summer one, I think they just. Well, they, 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 they have, and they will, and they will continue to do so. And that's the first point I was thinking, maybe that isn't articulated that well. But when we went through the land use, like, for, so it was the same thing, we have some of the need. And they take, and they stake, and they take, and they sway, and I don't think oversnowed about. Molly, I will be back in later this afternoon, just to go run a track, you know. Because as Bert pointed out, what they have is what they have, you get some of their, so I can't really pull that in. And with motorized trails, I keep, thank you, Mr. Chairman, because it was a closure road. And you always do a reassurance, so there are more people to say, well, this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, because of the closure road, and the, you know, excuse for resort events, so there are more people to say, right, it's.
Stay away from those guys, those two. Well, Sandy, man.
For four.
That's right, never know.
You know. It could see, take care of that.
Yep, the finest person is, then actually will use us, I mean, uses that area and thinks that's a good idea.
Oh, I totally understand, well, you know, the, the original port of the plan, management side, we quite like hell with motorized use.
Rarely.
And, and the compromise is.